Okay, I'd like to reconvene back into the Finance Committee from Executive Session. And the time we left Executive Session, Mr. Shields?
We came out of Executive Session at 7:08 PM.
And is there a motion to adjourn Finance?
Move to adjourn Finance?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Finance is adjourned. At this time, I'd like to call the July 12, 2021 Council Meeting to order if you please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Simpson.
Here.
Coyne.
Here.
Hazeltyne.
President.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of June 28, 2021, as prepared and submitted by the clerk, be approved.
Second.
Discussion on the minutes. Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazeltyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to this evening's council meeting, and fortunately or unfortunately, the council will be going on break till August 23rd, a well-needed rest from all the hard work we've been doing. So we'll again reconvene most likely on August 23rd for our next Finance meeting. Health, Safety and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting is scheduled, nothing to report.
Public Properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Properties met last Wednesday, July 7th. We had two items on the agenda. One was the rebranding and some marketing for the Rec Center, and the second was a master plan to move forward with a master plan for Ray Mellert Park. We have no further meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. Special legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Special legislation has a meeting scheduled for Tuesday, August 24th at 5:00, 5:00 PM. And two things are on the agenda for that meeting. One is the proposal on demolition, and the second is a proposal on FEREL-CAT management. So both of those things will be on the agenda on August 24th, 5:00 PM here at City Hall.
Thank you. Water Utilities, Mrs. Hazeltyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Emerging Technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're working on scheduling a meeting for late August or early September to have the joint Emerging Technology Committee and the Charter Review Committee to work out the details on the proposed advisory committee.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have four for Finance Committee, 21143, American Rescue Plan Act documents, 21144, grant application Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, 21145, approved community development director job description revision, and 21146, amended salaries and benefits code at Juneteenth as a federal holiday. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamel?
Yes, sir. The Medina Farmers Market is each Saturday from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Those are being well-attended and enjoyed by many. The July 4th activities all took place and were well-received by the public. The fireworks were on July 3rd, and they were outstanding this year. Not sure if we got a double grand finale or what, but it was pretty impressive. The July 4th twin Sizzler races and parade all went well and were, as well, well-attended. Thankful to be able to host such events again since the COVID interrupted most of that for the past 15, 16 months. The Medina Community Band on July 4th at 7:30 in the evening had their first concert of the year. I did a short welcome, and most of the Uptown Park was filled with chairs, blankets, and people. Many asked the band to continue and/or schedule more concerts for this year. However, the band is still having difficulty in finding a rehearsal location to practice. If they can, they would like to have more concerts as well. I just wanted to mention Jansen and the Parks Cemetery and Forestry staff for the new plannings you see outside City Hall here, as well as mulching all the beds. And then we changed, if you noticed, we changed the north side of the parking deck to make it grass versus flower beds because of the shade, and just create grass there and then move the flower beds to the City Hall side. And then last but not least, I'd like to thank Jonathan Mendel for his service to the city. Jonathan will be leaving the employ of the city on July 15th, which is three days from now to take a position in Illinois. Jonathan has worked as our Community Development Director since October of 2013. In that position, he has overseen the Building Department, Economic Development Department, as well as planning, zoning, and running the boards and commissions. Jonathan will be missed, and I wish him and his family much success and happiness in his new position. We appreciate your seven-plus years of service to our city. For council's benefit and the public, in the interim of hiring a replacement for Jonathan, and Sandy Davis also recently left, Greg Huber will assist with boards and commissions. Kimberly Marshall will take over the comprehensive plan update process. Dan Gladish and his staff will assist with permits and property maintenance concerns. And Councilman Shields was able to refer a secretarial person from the schools for us to interview and try to bring in to fill some of the gaps for Sandy's position until we get that position filled. We appreciate all for assisting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. John, good luck in Illinois, we'll miss you. Finance is continuing to work on budgets because the next group is coming up here, and the bond issue is progressing along.
Mr. Huber, Law Director.
I have no report, and I wanted to wish Jonathan Mendel best regards. We went up toward Chicago.
Chief Kinney, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. On August 10th, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, we'll be holding our National Night Out event. It will be hosted and located at the Medina Recreation Center. The event will showcase police officers, firefighters, paramedics, and their equipment. We will also be visited by a lifeflight helicopter, police canines, and much more. We'll also have inflatables, hot dogs, and a DJ. This is a great opportunity to come out and see all the public safety equipment and to get to know our community public safety workers. We are encouraging those who want to attend to register on the Medina Rec Center website under the Activities tab. However, it's not mandatory to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leszczuka, Municipal Court.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing new to report.
Thank you, Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just some continued reinvestment into North Court. Giant Eagle is going to be doing a major interior alteration project, $1.5 million. That ends my report.
Thank you, Ms. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Yes, thank you. I have nothing on my position on the work that Community Development is doing, but I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for having me be part of the process of community development in the community. Everybody's very welcoming and friendly, and it's kind of part of the DNA of Medina, I can tell. So I appreciate that this time, and Medina will always have a fondness for the community and for all the people in it, and for all the good personal and professional friendships that I've built over this last seven and a half years. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just a quick update, we do have our ribbon cutting scheduled to start back up on July 23rd, which is a Friday. We have a total of five events scheduled so far. We may be able to squeeze one or two more in. But starting out the day at 10 o'clock in the morning will be Bubbles &amp; Bowes, which was a new business that opened in 2020 at 119 Lafayette Street. That's in the South Town District. Then at 11:00 AM, we're celebrating the Habitat for Humanity Restore Expansion Project and New Location at 233 Lafayette Road. And then at 1:00, we'll head up to North Court for CSL Plasma, which is a new business that recently opened within the last month. And then at 4:00, Swine Barbecue, which is at 117 Public Square, which is the new restaurant that Brian and Mary Hilberg opened after they closed Marie's Cafe. And then at 5:00 is the Medina Brewing Company, located at 320 South Court Street in the Farmers' Exchange Building. So be on the lookout for those electronic invitations to be coming into your email here very soon. And then last, I also wanted to wish Jonathan best wishes in his new role, moving to Illinois for you and your family and the kiddos. And I never like to say goodbye, but I'd rather say I'll see you along the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowley, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple updates from the Rec Center. We do still have four weeks of Party in the Parks left. This coming Wednesday, we'll be at Ray Mellert Park with Jungle Bob. And on Wednesday, the 21st, we will be at Greenwood, having a luau party with a DJ. And we've also moved our foam party that was canceled last week to join up with that. On July 28th, we have a pool party and DJ at Memorial Park, and then finishing the summer off at Ray Mellert Park with an end-of-the-summer DJ party. Currently, with the four remaining events that we have, we have over 450 families signed up for Party in the Parks. So we're pretty excited about the pilot program and the connections that we've made with everybody in the community. It's going really well. Our drive-in movie was postponed a few weeks ago due to high winds. That has been rescheduled for September 4th. If the public had already registered for that event, you do not need to reregister. And then lastly, our shutdown is scheduled for August 2nd through the 6th, which is in line with Fair Week. We anticipate opening on the 7th. The only thing that might not open is our leisure pool, as we are doing some substantial upgrades there. Once the leisure pool opens, we will be looking to do a membership sale in August. Some more details to come on that. Check out the website, medinarec.org. Thanks.
Thank you. Chief Walter, Fire Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick update, a little bit of good news for us. The Fire Department's been, as you're aware, working on a plan to cover some of the staffing hours that we're not currently able to do. So just a recap for anybody in the community that are listening, the Fire Department is only staffing Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM until midnight, and overnight and on the weekends, we rely completely on firefighters responding, excuse me, from home. So this added shift will help us, we're looking to add a shift on Saturday and Sunday that will run from 8:00 AM till 4:00 PM. That's our first shift time, and that will help greatly to reduce our response times and just overall provide a better fire service. We don't have an exact start date for it just yet. We're evaluating a couple of final things, but we do believe to have it up and running this fall. Thank you.
Thank you. City Engineer, Pat Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to tell Jonathan, it's been nice working with you these past seven and a half years, and best of luck going forward. We'll miss you.
Ms. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report and wish Jonathan good luck, but he and his family as well on his move and your endeavors. Take care.
Notices, Communications, Petitions, we do not have any unfinished business as none. Introduction of Visitors, Members of the Public will be permitted the opportunity to speak in any issue concerned which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed at the Chair and a reasonable time limit, approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the rear microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the Chair by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. At this time, entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 11321, ordinance 11421, resolution 11521, ordinance 11621, ordinance 11721, resolution 11821, ordinance 11921, ordinance 12021, ordinance 12121, ordinance 12221, ordinance 12321, ordinance 12421, ordinance 12521, ordinance 12621, and ordinance 12721.
Lot of 120s in there. I will make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings for the tonight's ordinances and resolutions.
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the motion to suspend the rules?
Hazeltyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Motion passes, 6-0.
Ordinance 11321, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Medina and Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association, adding June 19th, Juneteenth, as a federal holiday.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause request that I moved to add at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So President Biden signed on June 17th, making June 19th a holiday quite late in the afternoon. June 19th this year was on a Saturday, which would have meant we would normally close then the day before, in this case would have been Friday, the 18th. But the fact that we didn't find out until shortly before 5:00 PM, we weren't able to notify the public or tell people not to come back tomorrow at our different permitting locations and utility signups. So we worked the holiday, even though it was declared a holiday. For the public's benefit, all three of our OPBA contracts include a certain list of holidays as well as any day the governor or president assigns as a holiday during the contract period. And our Salary and Benefits Code, which is ordinance 11421, has the same language. As a result of that, I met with unions, and we drew up a memorandum of understanding for this year only to permit this to be a floating holiday instead of having to pay everybody in the city an extra eight hours' pay because they work the holiday as well as the holiday pay. This lets our department heads schedule people off and coordinate work schedules more efficiently between now and the end of the year, instead of having everybody all off on the same day. Now for 2022 and going forward, like any other holiday in the contract, it will be recognized on June 19th. The request for the emergency clause is if we wait for council to come back in August to pass this, then we've lost the rest of July and nearly the entire month of August, and we'd like some of these employees to have the opportunity to begin using this day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazeltyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 11321 passes 6-0.
Emergency clause passes 6-0.
Oops, sorry. Emergency clause passes 6-0.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency, I mean...
Oh, my lord. Got you messed up.
You got me missing, of the ordinance.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazeltyne.
Yes.
113 passes 6-0.
Thank you. Ordinance 11421, an ordinance amending section 3107 of the Salary and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to accepting the revised job description of the Community Development Director.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
Emergency clause been requested, I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mayor Hamel?
Okay, so I apologize with 113. I thought this was where we were changing the Salary and Benefits Code, but I see what it is. So we're changing the job description to include the provisions of every other job in the city, that they have to be a licensed driver in the state of Ohio and also have to be insurable under the city's insurance. When we revamped all of the other job descriptions, somehow the Community Development Director was missed with that. The reason for the emergency clause is we'd like to begin advertising for these positions, and we generally include the job description with it, so the 30 days would prevent us from doing so for 30 days, and we'd rather get started. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance and/or the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazeltyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Emergency passes 6-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazeltyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 11421 passes 6-0.
Resolution 11521, a resolution accepting a donation of various hand sanitizer equipment, hand sanitizing products, and antibacterial wipes from Do It Best Corp. to the City of Medina.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Pacoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank Do It Best and specifically Ryan Standard for their generous donation. The donations have a street value of $150,000, so that's quite a bit of material. Talking with the mayor, and as the council's aware, we intend on sharing the items and the material with the fair folks, venues that have large groups, government agencies, and groups like that. So again, we thank them for their donation.
Yes, that was a great donation, and we appreciate their donation to the city. Any other comments? Ms. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Pacoli, did you say that was $150,000? Or not 15?
$150,000.
Okay. All right. We're gonna have to modify that then, because the ordinance has $15,000.
Okay.
It's a typo, so we...
It does, indeed.
If the clerk would acknowledge that typo in the ordinance to $150,000 instead of $100, instead of $15,000? Thank you, Ms. Rose. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the resolution?
Simpson.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Hazeltyne.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Motion passes 115, I'm sorry, 6-0 for resolution 11521.
Thank you. Ordinance 11621, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept one easement necessary for the Spring Grove Street Bridge Replacement Project.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do need one more easement at Spring Grove Street. We needed three total. By securing this, we are able to move forward with the bridge replacement project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Shields?
Mr. President, thank you. This involves my employer, and I was involved with this, I'm going to abstain.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coyne.
Yes.
Hazeltyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Abstain.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 116 passes five yeas, one abstention.
Ordinance 11721, an ordinance amending ordinance number 11221 passed June 28th, 2021, relative to the amendment to the Charter of the City of Medina, Ohio, involving Article 5, Section 1 and 3, and Article 3, Section 12, relative to the position of the Finance Director.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause been requested, I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the ordinance and the emergency clause? Who's handling this one? Anybody? Mr. Huber?
This legislation addresses putting the question before the Medina City voter as to the Finance Director position being an elected position as opposed to an appointed position. And the ordinance today removed the language requiring that this individual be a Medina City resident, so it opens up the candidate pool to a broader range of people.
Thank you. My understanding was from discussions from you and the Charter Review, because this question came up through Mrs. Patton, just looking through it, is that their intent was to have it opened up more rather than limited to the City of Medina. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance and/or emergency clause?
I have a question.
Mr. Simpson?
So what we're saying is if the voters choose to make this an appointed position, it would be opened up more than the residents of the City of Medina?
Yes, I think it was in going, since it would be more of a department head position, all the current department heads that serve in the City of Medina do not necessarily live in the City of Medina. They live elsewhere, within the county or maybe in other counties, but that was the intent. I think it was to treat it as a department head position, which is not limited to this City of Medina resident. That's correct.
Well, I again will be voting no on this, just because of my beliefs that this should remain as an elected position. Thank you.
Understood. Any other comments? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Hazeltyne.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
No.
Coyne.
Yes.
Emergency clause passes five yeas, one day.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
No.
Coyne.
Yes.
Ordinance 11721 passes 5-1.
Oh, it passed without me, huh?
I'm sorry.
[laughing]
Hazeltyne.
Yes.
Okay. 11721 passes five yeas, one day.
Resolution 11821, a resolution accepting an anonymous $7,000 donation to be used towards the Medina City Police Department drone program.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Chief Kinney?
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution is for an anonymous donation of $7,000 for the police department's drone program. We'd like to thank the community members' generosity for that donation.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment?
This resolution is for an anonymous donation of $7,000 for the police department's drone program. We'd like to thank the community members' generosity for that donation.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the resolution?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hazeltime?
Yes.
Motion passes... Resolution 11821 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 11921, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an amendment to the service order with First Communications LLC to upgrade the existing telephone system at the Medina Municipal Court.
Move to approve? Second.
Discussion? Ms. Saltuka?
Thank you, Mr. President. The court is looking to upgrade the current telephone system pending the law director's approval on the contract, so we can get that started.
Did I say the name correctly?
You did. Good job.
I feel good about that. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hazeltime?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 11921 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 12021, an ordinance amending ordinance number 10318 passed July 9, 2018 relative to the job creation grant agreement for Kraft Works Engineering LLC.
Move to approve? Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. President. This request is to authorize the mayor to amend the job creation grant agreement for Kraft Works Engineering LLC. Earlier this year, the company discovered that the annual payroll and number of jobs estimated in their initial application had been miscalculated due to employees, several of them living and working out of state. Those are their field service technicians, as well as their officers of the company do not count towards the headcount and wages to the city payroll. So, what this amendment will do will reduce the full-time positions from 45 to 32, and the annual payroll will be reduced from $3,010,000 to $2,100,000. It will also amend the grant term from six years to five years. The company is still in their period of time where, you know, per our grant agreement guidelines, we give companies three years to ramp up to the payroll and jobs, so they have until the end of the year to hit their new target of payroll, and they're pretty close to that. We will monitor the grant again next year. The amended grant agreement has been reviewed and approved by the law director, and so we respectfully request council to approve this amendment. And just as a side note, we've not paid out anything on this grant, and when we do, it will be funded out of non-income tax-generated revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hazeltime?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 12021 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 12121, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a preliminary engineering agreement between Wheeling and Lake Area Railroad Company and the city of Medina, Ohio pertaining to the West Smith Road Phase IV project.
Move to approve? Second.
Discussion? Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, we are developing our Phase IV West Smith Road reconstruction project plans. As part of that, we do have to do some work within the railroad's right-of-way at their crossing. In order for us to secure the railroad's permission via permit, they're asking us to enter into this agreement so they can review the plans and offer any comments they may have.
Thank you. As a further clarification, the ordinance that was submitted out in the package missed a section inadvertently. This was section three in the ordinance, which reads as follows, that the funds that cover this agreement is estimated an amount of $12,000 are to be available in account number 108, 0610, 54411. That was just inadvertently left out of the ordinance that was distributed amongst council and the members of the public. So, that is part of the ordinance, because the money has to come from somewhere. So, any questions on that? Is there any other questions on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hazeltime?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 121-21 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 122-21, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Medina County Board of Commissioners relative to the water service on State Route 18.
Move to approve? Second.
Discussion? Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. In conjunction with ODOT's State Route 18 corridor improvement project, the city is trying to abandon our large water main that did run from the east side near a water treatment plant into the city. That water main is no longer necessary because we now get our water from the west side, so it presents a liability. In order for us to do that, we do have to transfer several water service customers from the city line to the county line. We've worked out this memorandum of understanding with the county where each of us equally shares the cost to do those transfers.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coy?
Yes.
Hazeltime?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hazeltime?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hazeltime?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Ordinance 123-21 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 12421, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two 2022 Freightliner 108 SD conventional chassis plow trucks, complete with Henderson dump bodies and equipment from Valley Freightliner and Western Star Inc. for the street department.
Move to approve? Second.
Discussion? Mr. Pacoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. This purchase, if approved, will be through the state bid. This is for two plow trucks, as stated. We intend on trading in the 1997 plow truck and a 2000 plow truck for $5,000 each. It's a little better than we would get at the city auctions. Additionally, we may not see these trucks until March of 2022. I know Councilman Rose had asked a question about the chip. The chips seem to be an issue with purchases of vehicles. My understanding is there's between eight and 24 chips in a vehicle, and...
Okay.
There's a lot.
Yeah, well, I was told from a retiree that this particular chip that is in short supply is the one that allows the newer vehicles to do the automatic start when they go up to a stop sign, stops the car, and then when you take the foot off the brake, the vehicle starts again. Okay? So...
That's where it's at. Correct.
Okay. So, that probably won't work here. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coy?
Yes.
Hazeltime?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
And Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance 124-21 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 12521, an ordinance to approve, adopt, and enact current replacement pages to the codified ordinances of the city of Medina, Ohio.
Move to approve? Second.
Discussion? These are just our annual replacement of the pages to the codified ordinances of the city of Medina, and we have to do this periodically to update them. Any questions? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hazeltime?
Yes.
Ordinance 125-21 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 12621, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute the necessary documents required to receive monies from the American Rescue Plan Act and to execute the assurances of compliance with the civil rights requirements.
Move to approve? Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. This act, as well as the assurances... assurance of compliance, both need to be signed before we can be granted access to the portal, which is a requirement for the city to then receive whatever funds we're going to receive in the two installments from the federal government through the state government. Originally, that was supposed to occur in April, then May, and here we are in mid-July, still waiting on the state. Some of the requirements are still being hammered out with the federal government as far as what the monies can be used for, so we're waiting on both the monies and the final requirements. And the emergency clause is so that we can get entered into the portal and be ready when the funds are available.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on either the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hazeltime?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Emergency passes 6-0.
Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hazeltime?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 126-21 passes 6-0.
And finally, ordinance 12721, an ordinance amending section 3110 of the salaries and benefits code of the city of Medina, Ohio relative to adding the 19th day of June, Juneteenth, as a federal holiday.
Move to approve? Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause?
Discussion on the ordinance and emergency clause. Mayor Hamel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, it's the same explanation as ordinance 113-21 that we passed with the OPBA unions, except this applies to non-union city employees as well as Teamsters. And the reason for the emergency clause is so that we don't have to wait 30 days, and folks can begin to use this floating holiday, so we don't have all of them bunched up at the end of the year and trouble scheduling them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on either the emergency clause and/or the ordinance?
Mr. President?
Mr. Rose?
Just for clarification, this year and this year only, it's a floating holiday for salary employees? Yeah. For the OPBA, for the non-union employees, and for the Teamsters, it's just this year only. It'll be a floating holiday, and every year thereafter, unless it's rescinded as a holiday, it'll be on the 19th day of June, and then we have protocols. If it's a Saturday, it goes to Friday, and if it's a Sunday, it goes to Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hazeltime?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance 127-21 passes 6-0.
Council comments? Mr. Simpson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Jonathan, I wish you and your family the best of luck. We're sorry to... The city's going to lose your expertise here, but Illinois and Chicago is going to be gaining. I was hoping your kids would grow up to be Medina Bs through their entire education